Yeah, we're just calling to order. Let us know. Are you guys ready? Oh, no, not yet. Just let it, just let us know. No rush. We are calling the September 28th School Board Meeting to order. Comments from the public on closed session items. So if you have a comment on a closed session item, go ahead and put your first and last name in the chat. And let us know the item that you would like to speak towards. And we'll give you a minute if you choose to do so.
Looks like there are no comments from the public on closed session items, so.
All right, so we are gonna adjourn to closed session. Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'm moved to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor? Hi. All right, moving on, special recognitions, reports and presentations. We're gonna start with Students of the Month for September 2021 from Kennelworth, Petaluma Junior, Casa Grande and Petaluma High School.
Hello, I am Clara Hansen and I am doing the first Kennelworth Junior High School Student of the Month for September 2021. Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our Student of the Month, Kanishka Siva. The Kennelworth teachers have chosen Kanishka as Student of the Month because of his academic excellence, strong worth ethic, and willingness to always help others. Kanishka's teachers had many kinds of words to say about this outstanding young man. Ms. Martin, Kanishka's PE teacher stated, Kanishka is a standout student already. He is kind, polite, and friendly. Kanishka is a hard worker and a team player. Mr. Radke, Kanishka's science teacher echoed this by stating, Kanishka completes all his work, participates actively in class, and regularly assists his classmates with their questions in a positive way. Ms. Street, Kanishka's math teacher, shared, Kanishka is a hardworking team member who positively contributes to the group discussions in class. He explains this thinking well and is always willing to help others. Kanishka is not only an exceptional student, he is also a black belt in Taekwondo, which he has practiced for the past five years. Recently, Kanishka has endeavored to learn Contempo, a different style of martial arts. No doubt he will reach this mastery in years to come. Kanishka engages in many school community activities, including running cross country with the Kennelworth team, taking piano lessons for the past several years, and participating as a member of the swim team. Even with all these commitments, Kanishka's friends and family find him to be fun, positive, and helpful. Kanishka puts a great deal of effort into all of his classes and maintained a 4.0 GPA during both 7th and 8th grade. Kanishka stated that he is able to accomplish this by staying organized, never procrastinating, and staying committed to his studies. After attending Casa Grande for high school, Kanishka plans to attend college for medicine or for engineering. The Kennelworth team admires this young man's dedication and positivity, and we know he will do great things. Congratulations, Kanishka, for your accomplishments.
Hi, my name is Audrey Hughes and I am proud to introduce Emily Benstick as our September Student of the Month. Emily has been chosen for the Student of the Month by her teachers because of her commitment to learning, sense of curiosity, and constantly positive attitude. Emily's teachers were enthusiastic in their praise for her. Ms. Waldemore, Emily's English teacher, states, Emily is a delight to have in class. She works well with her peers, is diligent and thoughtful in her work. She has a commitment to fully understanding class and will often stay after class to ask thoughtful, clarifying questions. Mr. Russo, Emily's PE teacher, for both 7th and 8th grades, shared, in the past, she has shown great pride in completing all of her work to the highest quality. She asks questions for clarification when needed and is always ready to go. She brings a positive attitude and a strong work ethic to class every day, and she is a joy to teach. She represents all that we want in a student here at Kennelworth Junior High School. Emily's hard work and dedication has paid off, earning her a 4.0 for both years at Kennelworth. Outside of school, Emily plays soccer with North Coast Football Club and is an active member of her local Girl Scout troop. Recently, an opportunity through the Scouts allowed Emily to submit a science project to the Making Space for Girls program. Emily's plant-based project was chosen as one of 22 winners to be launched into space on a SpaceX cargo rocket and is currently orbiting around the Earth on the International Space Station. Along with the other winners, Emily's proposal helped design a greenhouse prototype which is being monitored by scientists for the next six months. After finishing her 8th grade year here at Kennelworth, Emily plans to attend Casa Grande for high school and has her sights set on a career in science or engineering after graduating college. Emily's future is clearly a bright one, and Kennelworth is incredibly proud to have such a determined, creative, and curious mind among us. Congratulations, Emily, for your accomplishments.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Petaluma Junior High School.
Soran, are you gonna go first?
I'm sure.
Great.
We are honored to present Miles Nicholas as one, oh, shoot, sorry, my dog. We are honored to present Miles Nicholas as one of our September 2021 Students of the Month. Miles was born in nearby Santa Rosa on August 15th, 2008, and has been attending Petaluma School since kindergarten. He is an all-around terrific student athlete with a particular passion for baseball. Miles's goal is to always be learning, continue to take advanced classes, earn good grades, and eventually attend a top college. He aspires to play baseball through high school and beyond. Miles enjoys school and works hard. He has straight A's on his PJHS transcript, which is especially impressive after a year of distance learning. He has excellent leadership skills and applies them well. At Grant Elementary, Miles was selected to be on the student leadership team and is this year's PJHS Student Vice President, modeling school pride and spirit. He also hopes to be a counselor one day at Westminster Woods, where he went for 6th grade camp. His PE teacher comments, Miles is intelligent and consistently produces quality work. While his leadership teacher adds, Miles is a positive leader who takes initiative when helping his classmates. He treats everyone around him with kindness and respect and is always willing to jump in and lend a helping hand. As an athlete, Miles is strong, dedicated, and focused. Oh, sorry about that. Wait. Baseball is his favorite sport, and he has played pitcher and shortstop for Petaluma National Little League and Athletic Edge All-Stars and other local travel ball teams. One of Miles's hobbies is collecting baseball cards, and he intends to visit all 30 of the US Major League Baseball stadiums. He also plays basketball and is on the PJHS cross-country team. He practiced Taekwondo where at the age of nine and a half, he was one of the youngest students to earn his black belt by completing the rigorous training, including self-defense, sparring, and a 10-mile run. In addition to sports, Miles has many other interests. He loves traveling, playing guitar, and reading fantasy genre books. Miles is very close with both his immediate and extended family and is proud of his Chinese, Greek, and Irish heritage. Miles' parents and brother have this to say about our young man. Miles is smart, determined, and pushes himself to do his best. He consistently seeks out new opportunities to grow. We have seen him achieve in success in school, sports and other extracurricular activities, and appreciate how thoughtfully he treats others. His relationships with his family, friends, and community are very important to him, and we are excited to watch him grow after his dreams and for all that he will accomplish. Miles Nicholas is one of those all-around amazing students, and we are proud to have Miles represent Petaluma Junior High School as one of our first 2021, 2022 Students of the Month.
We are proud to present Anouk Langston as one of our first Students of the Month for 2021 and 2022. Anouk is a highly capable and motivated individual who looks forward to studying culinary arts and journalism. Cooking is her passion, and she aspires to be a chef, de cuisine, in her own highly-ready restaurant one day. Anouk was born in September 19th, 2008, in San Francisco and has been a member of the Petaluma Junior High community since attending the 6th Grade Academy during the 2019-2020 school year. Academically, Anouk is an amazing student. She practices consistency and focus. Prior to her enrollment at PJHS, Anouk attended a French immersion school where everything was taught in French. After that, she was homeschooled for a year. As a 6th Grade Academy student, Anouk was presented with an award of Best Overall Student. In her 7th grade year while distance learning, she earned straight A's, most of which are actually A-plus. Not surprisingly, Anouk's 8th grade teachers have a lot of positive things to say about her. Her Spanish teacher comments, Anouk impresses me with her diligence and attentiveness in class. Her math teacher adds, Anouk is always ready for class, organized, and fully participating. In addition to experimenting with cooking, Anouk enjoys swimming, drawing, reading, and writing. She collects Marvel, Memora- Memor-
Memorabilia.
Memorabilia. Sorry, I froze up. And figurines. Her parents comment, Anouk has been gifted with a great brain and kind heart. She is a force of nature and is hard to distract when she gets her mindset to something. We couldn't be any prouder. We are very pleased to honor this caring and hard-working young woman, Anouk Langston, to the board and are pleased to have her represent Petaluma Junior High as a Student of the Month.
All right, thank you, readers, and congratulations to our four Junior High Students of the Month. You guys are super impressive. All right, let's move on to the high schools. Looks like we have Casa pulled out first.
Yes, hello. My name is Carissa Snout. I'm one of the co-ASV presidents at Casa Grande, and I am very excited to be here and present our Students of the Month for September of 2021. So our first Student of the Month for September is Jacob Reiser. Jacob is a passionate and bright student. He has been taking courses at Casa Grande since 7th grade. He strives for excellence and thoroughness in all his work, both within school and outside of school. He plans to apply for early decision at Stanford, MIT, and Georgia Tech, and will major in mechanical engineering. Outside of school, he is restoring a 1972 Datsun 240Z that he bought as a quarantine project. He races his 2011 Acura MDX on the Wednesday night drags at the Sonoma Raceway, and he is building a Mazda Miata race car to compete in the 24 Hours of Lemons. He has been a teacher's aide in the Casa Auto Shop program for three years and is working at America's Tire in Roanoke Park. When he's not hard at work, you can find him playing golf for the Casa team, making music, or hanging out with his girlfriend. His most important goal in life is to revolutionize the automotive industry by creating quicker cars that reverse the machine's negative impact on the environment. As the Casa community, we are very proud of you, Jacob, and we are happy to have you representing us. Our second Student of the Month, Cole Becker, is a hard-working, ambitious student who is currently a senior at Casa Grande. He is dual-enrolled at Casa and the SRJ C in order to fit more classes into his schedule. He has played basketball for Casa during the entirety of his time here and has additionally taken on lacrosse since sophomore year. After high school, he plans to attend a four-year university while staying in California and is applying for UCLA, UC Berkeley, and UC San Diego. Cole will major in engineering, specifically either computer engineering or mechanical engineering. His favorite teacher at Casa is Mr. Creighton, who taught honors chemistry his sophomore year. Cole works batteries plus bulbs on the weekends to save money for college, where he repairs phones. In his free time, he enjoys reselling trading cards, hanging out with friends, and spending time with his pug, Nugget. Once again, Cole, we are very proud to have you representing our Casa community.
All right, thank you, Carissa. Good to see you. Congratulations, Jacob and Cole. Good to see you guys, too. All right, let's move on to Petaluma High School.
Hello, my name is Jenny Hinky, and I will be telling you about Petaluma High School's September Student of the Months, Nicoletta Johnson and Liam Richardson. Nicoletta Johnson is a senior at Petaluma High School, where she has been involved in student leadership, lacrosse, and soccer for the past four years, in addition to taking various honors, AP, and JC courses. Currently, she is ASV Vice President and is one of the club co-presidents of Circle of Friends. She is also in the Student Advisory Council and has been for the past two years. Outside of school, she enjoys being a volunteer coach for a U-10 girls' PYSL team named Radioactive. She also plays on a year-round club lacrosse team and volunteers at Miracle League. Nicoletta is hoping to be admitted to USC, Chapman, or UCSB, among others, where she will major in psychology. After getting her bachelor's, she plans on getting her master's degree so she can pursue a career in occupational therapy. Nicoletta says she owes her success inside and outside of school to her wonderful high school teachers, coaches, and parents, as they really helped shape her work ethic, made her feel she was able to excel in anything she tried. And Liam Richardson is a very responsible student, prompt, and follows directions. He attended Grant Elementary, Petaluma Junior High, and is now a senior at Petaluma High. Sports are important to Liam. He participates in the swim team at PHS as well as the Westside Aqueducts. Liam is a blue belt in Taekwondo and continues to advance in his sport. In addition, Liam participates in Miracle League baseball as a player and spokesperson. Recently, Liam has also become a surfer as well. Liam's interests include traveling and listening to music. He loves to listen to music while he travels to destinations like Costa Rica, France to visit family, Ireland, Spain, Italy, Morocco, and Lake Tahoe especially. Liam plans to finish high school, go to college, and work part-time at Grocery Outlet while he continues his hobbies.
Thank you. Congratulations to both of you. I think that's it. Thank you. Still getting used to the hybrid. It's a little awkward. All right, so we are gonna move on to comments from the public on non-agendais. Oh, never mind. Okay. We are actually, item 6.2, Petaluma City Schools Equity Study with Orenda Education. Tony, I believe this is you.
Yeah, turn it on. Thank you and good evening, everyone. The pandemic really has exposed vulnerabilities of districts across the US, and even here in Petaluma, that has been no exception. We know there's been a loss of learning for a lot of our students, especially our most vulnerable, and the pandemic has only magnified the challenges we face as a district. To what extent, that has been hard to know. As our work gets underway, we have been presented with an opportunity through our one-time funding to gather more information about the state of our district. An opportunity to align our work with our board goals around equity. An opportunity to honor the work we have already done and are doing. In a moment, I will introduce Orenda Education. They are experts in discovering district vulnerabilities, revealing equity gaps and the magnitude of our learning loss, as well as highlighting some of the great things we've been doing. Work that we can continue to enhance with greater support. Their outside perspective helps us remain objective in this work and really can support us moving more strategically and more priority-focused. With that, I would like to invite Jenny and Janet with Orenda Education and to allow them to introduce themselves as well as highlight their process.
Thank you, Tony, and good evening, President Pond, board members, Superintendent Harris, staff, and Petaluma community at large. It is our pleasure to be here tonight. First and foremost, thank you for that wonderful opening with the student recognition. I would like to acknowledge not only the students receiving the awards, but the students presenting the awards. How about some snaps for them? They did an amazing job there. As a former middle school principal, nothing warms my heart more than seeing student presenters. So thank you for starting our evening with that wonderful presentation. I have just a short presentation to share with you tonight regarding the work that we're hoping to partner with Petaluma City Schools to do, give you a little introduction to who we are as an organization. I have my colleague Janet with me tonight, and we're here to share the presentation and just to answer your questions along the way. Can everyone see my screen okay? Wonderful. All right, so let's get started. First and foremost, I'd like to give you a little bit of background about who we are. We are an organization that's been around for over 24 years, close to 25. We partner with schools and districts all over the state of California to do some transformational work. We've supported schools that are in program improvement through IIUST, through the PI year 1, 2, 3+, I think, I believe now, through differentiated assistance. And we continue to do the equity work grounded in research and practice. And so what we do is we collectively come in as a team and we take a look at your systems. As a team, we are all former classroom teachers as well, former principals, and former district office personnel. So collectively, we've got K-12 experience from student classroom teachers all the way up through the district office. We like to ground ourselves in the statement that says every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it's currently getting. And so if you look at the example of the iceberg, everything above the waterline is what people typically look at this in terms of the public student outcomes that you're able to see. What we're hoping to look for through the course of the equity studies is to really take a deep dive to everything below the waterline and take a look at those systems that are producing the current results. What we know to be true is that everyone already has pockets of success and great things going on at every single district. So what we hope to accomplish during the course of our equity studies is to answer these three questions here. First and foremost, what is the current success profile? Secondly, we look to answer what systems best explain that student's success profile. For those pockets of success that you're already having, what are the systems that are producing those successes within your district? How can we expand and leverage those systems? And for the students that are not yet performing where you would like them to be, what are the systems that are perhaps barriers to the success? And third, we look what can be done to accelerate student success, recognizing that every district is at a different starting point, and every district already has some wonderful initiatives that they've already started on their own. The methodology that we use in order to accomplish this study is first and foremost, we start with the staff surveys, focus group interviews. We try to collect as much data as we can from all the different stakeholders within your district. Secondly, we look to capture the student experience by shadowing students on campus, living a day in the life of a student who's an English learner versus a student who's in an honors program versus a student who is none of the above and just the typical average student. We take those two components and we triangulate everything, both the quantitative and the qualitative data, and we're able to use that triangulation of data that your district provides to us to produce a report that comes along with findings and recommendations. Just to give you an indication of the timeframe that we're looking to accomplish this work, we would be collecting the data on the ground between October and November. That's when you would see the focus group interviews happening, the staff surveys happening, the data collection on sites with the student shadowing. Between December and January is the timeframe that we would use to then triangulate the qualitative and the quantitative data that your district provides to us to then be able to produce reports and share those reports out somewhere around late January, beginning of February. That's the proposed timeline and the scope of work that we're looking to partner with your district to do. And I will open it up to any questions or any additional comments that my colleague Janet may want to add.
I've got a few to start off, if that's all right.
Sure.
I wanted to ask Tony or anyone in the district office, I think some of you have had experiences, right, with Orenda? Is that true?
Yes, I've had experience with them when I worked in Sandy Seadrow as well as in Linwood. They did a report similar to this that helped us really dive down into the areas that we needed support in as well as areas that we noticed the equity gaps within our organization.
And the process and findings were helpful, I presume, for your districts?
They were. During the time in Sandy Seadrow, we had a new superintendent at the time, so it really helped ground the work that was beginning there, and so it really supported the initiatives that we wanted to get going with real data that we needed to have to prioritize what was important at the time.
And a couple for you, Jenny and Janet. Thank you for the presentation and for being here. One was, so on the, I appreciate the quote, you know, that we're built for the outcomes we get. And in terms of outcomes, besides the usual dashboard-type outcomes, are we also, is your process also include measures of school climate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, when we're doing the report and we go through the process of the study, we ask for any type of surveys that the school might have already collected. So Healthy Kids Survey, LCAP surveys, anything that, you know, PBL-
So Healthy Kids Survey, LCAP surveys, anything that, you know, PBIS related that can capture the climate and culture and specifically student feelings about their academic experience. And we use that data, qualitative data, to triangulate what we're also seeing quantitatively. So yes, it's something that is definitely a consideration. And if it helps answer the question of what systems help best explain the current student success profile, then we absolutely want to take a look at that. And it's part of the story.
Good, good. I want to make sure it does because I think that that's probably a critical piece. The other thing I wanted to ask was on your calendar, the timeline, you know, it looks like you'll be collecting a bunch of data, doing analyses. And then, you know, at the end, we're going to see a report. I'm wondering if there's, if there are built-in places along the way where you can be sharing what you're seeing in the data with stakeholders in our district so we can help you interpret what you're seeing. You know, instead of getting a big report at the end, having a discussion along the way is what I'm asking. Is that a part of your process?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead, Jenny.
Yes, absolutely. There will be checkpoints along the way before anything is produced in the final report. And that will include multiple rounds of collecting data and checking in with a variety of stakeholders as are one of the ways in which we collect, continue to collect the data and make sure that it's accurate.
So Jenny, does that typically involve Orinda coming back to a board meeting from time to time? Those sort of check-ins?
The check-ins have not typically been during the course of a board meeting, although we can absolutely do that if it's helpful. They've typically been through Zoom with smaller settings or smaller groups of stakeholders. Or we can do them in person, whatever you feel would be helpful. We're flexible.
This is a board meeting and you're participating now. Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I mean, I mean, for the board's purpose, it'd be helpful just to hear that check-in, to hear what you're seeing within the data so far and those things. But my question was really more about interpretation of what you're seeing in the context of the people who are here. You know, and that would probably involve more, I would think, district staff, site staff, students, you know, checking in with those groups that you're collecting data from.
Yes, certainly. Whenever we encounter data that, you know, as you can imagine, we've been doing this for a little bit, we've seen all, we're very familiar with what type of outcome data comes our way, but the qualitative data. There often we have questions, we want to dig a little deeper. We want to go do a deeper dive. And so we'll ask questions that come from the data. And we go through a cycle, a data inquiry cycle that sometimes requires additional data. And so we absolutely engage very deeply with the data team at the sites and at the district level. So the interpretation of the data is something that we're constantly doing and we get clarification around. But we can certainly engage with the board if that is helpful and kind of share out periodically what we're seeing, if that's something that you'd like. That's not a problem whatsoever.
Yeah, I'd love to see that as well. Same as Sheldon and Matthew, periodic check-ins if that's possible. But my question was related to what Sheldon brought up. So at the end of all of this, when you present the data, do you also present recommendations? Or you just give us the data and then we leave it up to our cabinet and superintendent to make those further recommendations?
No, the findings are always coupled with the recommendations. And then along with the presentation of that, we embed a way to help the both site and district teams interpret and process the data and then determine next steps in terms of what the findings and recommendations will show.
This sounds wonderful. I love the idea. Can't hear it. Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, I love the idea of the deep dive, which is, I think, what we've really, really wanted to investigate and see where the issues are really. Our sites are all very different. And so I'm wondering about the process of the students and the shadowing, the, you know, determining that climate and how you get the students. What's the process around that? Is it just through principals and counselors? Is, I mean, I just would like to know how you found it to be most successful, where you really get a real sense of that climate on that campus.
So I can answer how we select the students. We give some framework to the administration to say, we would really love to see a cross-section of student, across the student body. So we would love to see English learners, students with IEPs, students that are highly engaged with affiliations on campus, students that are not students from AP and honors courses, et cetera. And so what they do is that they'll provide, male and female, et cetera. And so they provide the names of the students that really should be random. And then we follow them throughout their day, over three days, to see what is the student experience? When you look at instruction and their daily, their day-to-day through the lens of the English learner, the AP student, what are the commonalities and what are the differences in what they're experiencing? And so we try to get the overall picture, but also a very specific picture of what each student group is experiencing. And so we'll follow them from class to class. And we'll kind of see how are they interacting with the instruction, with the materials, with the peers? And how deeply engaged are they? And so that's kind of what we gather as far as the student experience. And we'll interview teachers in every department so that we can dig a little bit deeper on how they engage with students from different student groups, et cetera. So Jenny, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to add that because we're all former classroom teachers, former school principals, we do this in a very respectful and discreet way where the student, if we do our job right, isn't even supposed to know that we're in the room or that they're the student that we are shadowing. And so we do this very discreetly, very respectfully for students. Our goal is to never disrupt student instruction. If there's something that's going on in the classroom that's not typical, we'll respectfully bow out and come back at a later time. But this is part of the process that allows us to really capture the student experience as part of the data.
And often, before school, after school, and lunch, we like to observe campus activity. What's the energy? Where are the, where are the students? Where's the hangout areas? And then what's going on during those areas? How do the adults interact with the students before, you know, before school, after school, during lunch? And so we like to just soak it all in and see, and does that, is that consistent with what we're hearing from the adults in our interviews, et cetera? So we look at it in many different angles.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Could you, could you talk a little bit about how you pick which schools you're going to really observe and where the students are?
Sure, we've done sort of a pre-analysis around the district based on the public data that's available to us. And we look at multiple factors. We look at contextual factors within the community. We look at student performance. We look at the percent of students on IEPs and English learner students. And from there, we try to provide a sampling of all, a variety of different settings within your district so that we're able to capture the student experience in a variety of different settings. Some schools will receive a full deep dive and that will come with an individual report. All schools will be included as part of the study so that we can produce a district report that captures trends across the district as well.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions for Orinda or for Tony?
I'm just really excited that we're going to do this.
Yeah, we're all really excited. Thank you, Tony, for bringing Orinda to our district. I think this can be really eye-opening. So, all right, with that, we'll let you guys go. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
All right, now comments from the public on non-agendized items. I've lost my name tag. Let that go. Okay, I am going to read our policy. And while I'm reading that, we can open the chat. If you have a comment about an item that is not on the agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat along with the topic that you would like to speak towards. Right. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district." While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments. And although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned at a previous meeting, please consider that your warning. You can also submit your input in writing by email or other means to the superintendent, board members, or other designated staff member.
Think about 10 more seconds. Okay, it looks like we have three, three comments from the public. The first one, Bean Stell, Andropolis.
Hello. Sal Andropolis, again, pronouns of North Bay LGBTQI families and Paloma tide. Just wanted to comment, following up on the events associated with the Casa Grande USA themed Spirit Day last week. Just wanted to urge the district to invest pandemic response funding in equity-related professional development and other measures in the very near term that would assist PCS staff working with students and supporting student leadership to provide guidance on things like this in a manner that will support the social and emotional well-being of all students, particularly BIPOC and LGBTQIA+ students, many of whom have reported feeling unsafe at school on PCS campuses. As many folks know, it's been reported that the USA theme, however well-intentioned, not surprisingly resulted in the display of Blue Lives Matter flags and other symbols of white supremacy on campus last week. And when this kind of messaging is associated with a school-sponsored event and staff aren't guiding the planning process in a way that helps to ensure inclusive and culturally conscious school events, it creates harm and an unsafe environment where many students, particularly BIPOC and LGBTQIA+ students, do not feel welcome and have their social, emotional well-being and educational opportunities put at risk. And these are outcomes that pandemic response funds can and should be used to mitigate, given that the central focus of a lot of this funding is on providing social, emotional supports, fostering student engagement, and mitigating learning losses. And so it appears that, you know, the work that Orinda Education is going to be doing for PCS is a great example of this kind of investment. So that's a really positive kind of move in the right direction. But I think last week's incidents, along with other incidents of this nature that have happened in recent memory, just highlight the clear need for immediate and ongoing work in this area. So I would just ask that the district identify additional steps that can be taken in the very near term to provide this much-needed professional development and prevent further instances of this nature while the other longer-term efforts are underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Next up, we have Renee, Renee Ho, item number nine.
Renee, are you wanting to comment on something on the consent agenda?
Yeah, hi there, everyone. Renee Ho here. She, her, and I thank you.
Hold on, Renee, because we're not on items for the consent agenda. Just because you said item nine, were you wanting to comment? Okay, so that is in a couple minutes. Can you hang on?
I sure can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then last, we have Katie Johnson.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Okay. Hi, my name is Katie Johnson. My son is a sixth grader at McNair Elementary. And he's been going there since kindergarten. I'm speaking tonight to address the pride flag that's being raised every day along with the American flag and the California flag at McNair. I've never seen it there before, so I had a lot of questions about it. And I reached out to Lisha Khan to see if she could help me get some information. And she informed me that the flags were donated. I think it was from the LGBTQ North Bay organization. And they, the schools were asked if they would fly the pride flags for Pride Month, which it was back in June. So I looked to see if there was any policies regarding what flags go up at schools. But it looks like there are no policies in place, and Liz confirmed that as well. Other than the AR 6115, which addresses the American flag. So since there was no policies regarding the flags, it was left to the principal of each school to decide whether or not they wanted to fly the flag at their school. So I'm just requesting that a viewpoint, a viewpoint neutral policy be put into place, which, you know, clearly states how the flags go up at schools because I believe parents and residents and taxpayers in the school district should have a say in what symbols go up at public schools that they support with their tax dollars. should have a say in what symbols go up at public schools that they support with their tax dollars. So I can go on and on and on about my thoughts on this flag in particular and why I don't think it's appropriate for school. But just to narrow it down to one concern of mine, which is a good concern. You know, the, the flag, I understand that it means a lot to the LGBTQ community, and I'm not by any means trying to offend or deny anybody's humanity or anything like that. I have respect for everybody, all walks of life. But my main concern is, being that the flag is very beautiful, it's a, you know, it's a rainbow, okay? And children are drawn to that type of, you know, it's, it's pretty and it's eye-catching. But it does make me wonder if, you know, if a child, a student, you know, notices the flag and asks a teacher or, you know, a staff member, you know, what is that, what does that flag represent? I'm just wondering what they're told. And I'm just about, like, if they're speaking about love or sexuality, I'm just wondering, why, why have I not consented to that? And I think that.
You have about 30 seconds left, Katie.
Okay, I just wanted to address this because it just seems like if there is love and sexuality being discussed, it might not be aligned with the morals and values or religious beliefs of some families. And so I'm hoping that this could be on the agenda soon. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that was the last public comment. Okay, so reports, you guys hear me? Reports on activities and correspondence of the school board. All right, PCS staff barbecue, which was super fun. Thank you, everyone, especially Tony for grilling and Gina, Gina, right? Who planned it. That was fun. Petaluma Blacks for Community Development Picnic, CSBA Pacer Meeting, CSBA Region Three Meeting, Kenna Worth Basketball Game, San Antonio Back to School Night, CHIPPA Mental Health and Substance Abuse Work Group. So if anyone wanted to talk about any of the things, like if anything came up at any of the activities that they went to, you have a couple minutes to touch on that. I know Maddie wanted to talk about CHIPPA.
So I just wanted to kind of do a shout out to the CHIPPA meeting. CHIPPA stands for the Community, sorry, Community Health Initiative in the Petaluma area. And it's part of our Petaluma Healthcare District. This meeting was the, the work group on mental health and substance abuse. And I was so thrilled to see that Petaluma City Schools was highlighted at this meeting. And because they were doing the COVID-19 response, or kind of like how the monies were being spent. And so they had Brian DeFor give an update, our COVID-19 coordinator, our fabulous, by the way, COVID-19 coordinator, just updates about what we're doing in the schools and how we're, you know, navigating this tremendously difficult situation. And this is to the members of our healthcare community in Petaluma, in the Petaluma area. And they also introduced Gina Roberts, who's our Family Engagement Coordinator, and Jimena Gomez, who's our Wellness Coordinator. So it was like PCS day, and it was so impressive. And I just wanted to kind of also thank the CHIPPA group because they were so receptive to, like, Jimena is new and she, what, she just asked their advice, asked for, you know, like, resources, and they all just piled on and just, she was just writing faster than she could, you know, than was possible, just, and they were so excited about that. And so I just wanted to say that this group is, I think it's just a wonderful example of Petaluma. It makes me love my community even more. And, and also just thank you to the Petaluma Healthcare Center, or, sorry, District, for, you know, kind of giving a shout out to us and give us an opportunity to say what's going on in our school so that they have a better idea and they'll be able to help us.
What were they asking Brian specifically about? Or what was he presenting?
He was presenting like the COVID-19, like what we're doing, the testing, you know, kind of what his position is. And just kind of the general feeling. He was kind of giving an update about where, where we are in it, how many infections, things like that. And so it was great.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Caitlin.
I forgot to add this when you asked for items, because it hadn't happened yet. It happened today. I met with Councilwoman Delinda Fisher and some folks from the Cool Block Program to talk about how the schools can potentially get involved and ways that we can get involved that don't give staff and teachers a million more things to do, because I know everyone is already at capacity or far beyond capacity. But climate change isn't going anywhere, and we need to be resilient and prepared for that and work on emergency preparedness. So I'm excited to work with them in the future and hopefully get them to present to all of us maybe in a November meeting.
All right, thank you. Ellen or Sheldon, you have anything? You don't have to, if you want to. The picnics were fun, yes.
They were great, both of them. The ones that liked Black community involvement and staff picnic, both wonderful.
Sheldon?
I'm good.
I'm sorry. It's hard with you not in the room to see you shaking your head. Okay. All right, next up, comments from the public on consent items. Same policy, we'll reopen the chat. We know Renee's in there. We'll see who else wants to comment on something from the consent agenda. Again, please put your first and last name in the chat, along with the item that you want to speak towards.
10 more seconds, we'll close the chat. Okay, let's close the chat. We have two comments on, on consent items. The first one is from Renee Ho.
Hi again, everyone. My name is Renee Ho, pronouns are she/her and ella. And I'm speaking on behalf of a local organization called Amor Para Todos, which means Love For All. And we work to make our schools and communities more gender and LGBTQIA+ inclusive. And it's a pleasure to be here amongst all of you today, so thank you so much for the time. I wanted to just comment on the Orenda, Orenda, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. And I apologize firsthand if I'm late to the game in this and if previous meetings that I hadn't been able to attend, it's already been discussed or brought out. So my apologies if I'm bringing something up that has already been spoken about. The one comment I had on Orenda, I appreciate Jenny, and I can see the passion when she speaks about children and wanting to have a more equitable place for the PCS students. And I want to thank you all as well for taking the time and to bring this into the school so we can find what, how to best help our students, especially those marginalized students as well. One comment I had, I was curious, and maybe you already know, and I know may not be able to respond, but just to maybe think about or ask what end already if hasn't been asked, was if they have any people who work for them who represent the LGBTQI+ community. Why I ask that is because I heard about interviews and surveys. And sometimes I know, and from creating some and hearing and getting feedback, is some LGBTQI+ students, faculty members, there may be vocabulary that those in the community may not know. I know I'm learning a lot along the way still of how to word certain vocabulary where they can get answers from those surveys or interviews that may actually get the information that they're needing. I also heard, you know, using, make sure that they interview she and him, which I didn't see, didn't hear any vocabulary for those who are gender expansive or non-binary. So I was just curious about that. Think that could be an important piece to, to check in of with that. And again, just grateful and honored to be amongst you all, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much, Renee. Next, we have Sal Andropoulos.
Hello, Sal Andropoulos again, they're them pronouns, North Bay LGBTQI families and Pelema Tide. And just appreciate and second Renee's comments, just from a moment ago, definitely. And so also about the Arinda Education Study, just wanted to encourage, you know, PCS and the folks putting the study together to ensure inclusion of LGBTQIA+ students as a defined student group in their evaluation of academic performance and other equity metrics. And I just think this topic is always important to bring up in relation to data collection and surveys in schools, because LGBTQIA+ students, who, as we know, are very much a part of PCS schools at both the elementary and secondary levels, are not currently counted for purposes of things like assembling California dashboard data, the school dashboard, which is a very important body of information that provides the basis for metrics around things like academic performance, academic engagement, and school climate for several defined student groups in relation to things like the LCAP process. And while we know that LGBTQIA+ students are overrepresented in some of those defined student groups, such as foster youth or students who don't have housing, LGBTQIA+ students are not counted on their own despite being subject to significant mental health disparities and other impacts related to unsafe school and home environments, lack of acceptance among members of the community at large, for example, which are things that are pretty certain to impact things like graduation rates, attendance, academic performance, and school engagement. So while, of course, the Arinda Education Study is not the same thing as collecting data for the California school dashboard, I think it's still important to raise this issue, especially since it sounds like some of the same things might be measured. And I think this is actually a really important opportunity to fill in what is often kind of like a missing piece of the puzzle around LGBTQIA+ student needs and how we can best support them. So just wanted to make sure we're asking at the outset just what the process will be for that in this important effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal.
Is that it? For public comment?
Can I?
What you want to do? What were you?
I guess I.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. All right, so. Go ahead, Maddie. What, did you have a question?
No, I have to, I have to abstain.
Do we have to move on?
From 10.2.4, the MOU between Petaluma City Schools and Petaluma People's Services Center. So can we?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Actually, if I may, with a moment. We'd like to pull item 10.2.5.
Yeah.
And we'll bring that back on October 12th.
Okay, so without 10.2.5 and without 10.2.4.
10.2.4 will, will stay in. It's just Maddie needs to abstain. Oh, I see.
Oh, no, we have to pull it out.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna move to pull 10.2.4 and 10.2.5.
Okay.
And approve the rest of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
All right.
We still need to vote for 10.2.4 separately.
Yeah, but we're just, can I get a motion on that, what Caitlin said?
I have a second. I second.
Oh, you second?
She moved.
Oh, you did. Oh, yeah, okay. All right, I'll, wait, not yet. So any questions or comments on any of this?
Yeah.
I did want to ask you, I think that the, the two speakers, I would really like to see that part of the study. You know, however that works, but I think their point that it's a defined student group and it's an equity study, they're often the crux of bullying and all kinds of stuff.
And if you need local LGBTQI resources, Amor Para Todos and North Bay LGBTQI families are like the two to go to, for sure. So I can introduce you to them. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Sal and Renee.
So I'd like to hear more about Project True. Is that you, Liz? Okay, thank you.
That is me. So Project True is a part and funded by our TUP grant, which is the Tobacco Use and Prevention Education. And the idea of Project True is to come in as a resource and sort of a pure voice, student-centered entity for students to support other students peer-to-peer in tobacco and alcohol and other drug use. It also is wrapped in with Friday Night Live, if you've heard of that organization, which essentially finds opportunities for students to engage in safe, healthy, and sober activities together and to encourage other students to be a part of that. Project True is going to be on the Casa Grande High School and the Petaluma High, Petaluma High School campus with, with chapters on both campuses. They are a big piece of what they do, funded by the TUP grant, is to recruit kids, put out resources, talk about what they do, and then students volunteer to be part of it. We're hoping to get pretty large communities and, and student engagement that can do this to, to pull in other students, you know, to talk about harm reduction when it comes to tobacco, alcohol, and drug use on campuses.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to.
Oh, go ahead, Sheldon, sorry.
Excuse me. I want to go back to Arinda for a second. Tony, do you think, you know, this is on the consent agenda now. Can we approve this now? And do you have full confidence that you can ask them to include LGBTQIA as a, as a definable subgroup of students to be included in the study? Or do we need to pull this item out so that we can negotiate with Arinda to do that and then bring it back to the next board meeting?
Yeah, I'm fully confident that they can include that community within the study. I, I think it really comes down to working with the school sites to make sure we identify the students and be able to shadow them, interview them, and make sure that they're a part of this conversation and making sure that they can be represented.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. I did have one other item. It's on, let's see, what number is it? It's the student board members item. Let's see, that's item 10.3.1. My, I'm glad we're going down this way. I think this can be great for us. My question is, the seating of the three student board members, I noticed there's a thing in there about rotations. They're all going to be there, but one seated at the, at the, at the board and the other two not. I'm wondering the rationale behind that. Is that some kind of practice that you see around the state? Or is that an issue of space around the, the board or what? I, I was imagining in my head that all three of them would be seated at the, at the board.
Yeah, and I think we, Sheldon, we discussed that, and I think we're, we're on the same page that all three would be seated up with the board, so we, we may need to revisit. Does it still say that, Tony?
It says.
It does. There's a section on this.
However, only one student board member will sit with the board as a student board member for that meeting. Student board members will sit with the board on a rotating basis, once every three meetings or its equivalent.
We, we could pull that, edit it, and bring it back on the 12th. Yeah.
So, let's see, what's on the table right now? We have what's been.
What's been pulled?
Oh, my gosh, there's a bunch of them.
Well, before we pull it, I have. Well, before we pull it, I have another question slash issue with that, with that one, with the student board member about the voting. You were talking about how the voting's gonna look?
Yeah.
I just want to know.
So students aren't allowed to, by California law, they're not allowed to vote, I believe. But what, what the policies does say, and I do appreciate it, it says we can take a pre-vote. I can't remember the phrase that it uses. Preference or some, I can't remember what term.
Oh, yeah. No, I wasn't asking about that. I was asking about, sorry, more about the selection.
Oh.
Yeah, about them being voted on by the student body. I just want to know how that's gonna look about the student voting process and crisis, sorry, criteria for determining the board member. Like, how are they gonna be picked at the site?
I can read it. You want me to read what it's here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says, so I thought that, anyway, it says that the direction of the superintendent, a committee comprised of student body presidents from each comprehensive high school, the current student representatives to the board, the principals of each comprehensive and alternative high school, shall develop and oversee the student voting process and criteria for determining the succeeding representatives to the board. The selection process shall be completed in time to present the new school board members in the meeting in June. They'll be seated the first meeting following the end of the school year. So I, I thought that, I'm not quite, you know, I think I'm with, with you, John. I'm not really quite sure what the selection process is. If that's gonna be devised at each site? And they'll have a different voting process at each site? Or? Or is it gonna be like student, like running for student body? So they run. Yeah, it's more like a popular, we really want to avoid the popularity contest.
And that's, I think the idea is having all the schools make sure they come together and develop one criteria or one process for, so that every school isn't, you know, selecting the most popular students.
So that that's for the process for determining what exactly the vote, how the selection will happen.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense?
So that we can then ensure, you know, that every school site is following the same guidelines in regards to ensuring all students have the opportunity, the equity piece of it, so that every school isn't kind of doing their own thing and it turns into a popularity contest.
But what is that? What is the process? Do we know what it is?
They will develop it. Yeah.
It doesn't state any particular. Yeah. But it gives us the opportunity to make sure that we can, the process is fair and that it's, the opportunity allows for all students to participate.
So are the, are the schools gonna get together and develop the process? Or are they gonna have you come in? How is that gonna work?
So we'll, the district office will facilitate that process.
Okay.
But we are gonna ensure that there's representations of every school.
Right.
So that they, they follow the same process.
Thank you.
So in any event, we're pulling the item. So I think we can have further discussion about it before we bring it back to the next board meeting.
I'm just gonna let my old motion die. I move to approve the consent agenda without 10.2.4, 10.2.5, and 10.3.1.
Second.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I move to table 10.2.5 and 10.3.1 to the next board meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then I move to approve 10.2.4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain?
Aye.
Maddie abstains.
Do we have any more questions about the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
I know, I mean, I do. So, go ahead, Maddie.
I just have, I love the fact that PAX is having an overnight trip to help these students that didn't get the sixth grade trip. But I just, I, when I was reading through it, it said that there was a deposit that was non-refundable. And I realized that it's March. But, you know, who would have thought we'd still be dealing with this horrible thing? So I was just wondering, you know, we're gonna get, it's $13,000. It's a lot of money. And I was just wondering if there could be some kind of, you know, like, I don't know what you would call it, an addendum that said that in the case of COVID resurgence, that it is refundable? I mean, it's a, it's a kind of a pat contract. Sorry, I know I get into the weeds. No, it's a big question.
No, I was wondering too, because I didn't think we could even do overnight field trips or the field trip policy is kind of evolving all the time.
Yeah, that was my question too.
We have a link on the COVID.
So I believe this is their contract. So we would have to go to them to negotiate whether or not we can get a refund or not. So we didn't set the criteria.
I think.
So, so if you look at the, under the additional terms, it says if a cancellation is required due to COVID-related restrictions, all funds held on deposit will be transferred to a future contract or a full refund will be issued.
There we go.
I knew it was in there somewhere.
Oh, good. I thought I could do the whole thing. Thank you. I didn't see it either in our script.
All right. No, thank you. I just saw the credit, not the full return.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on. Right, you said we already go. Moving on, comments from the public on action items. Same policy. There was one action item, if anyone has a comment on that. We'll keep the chat open for just a minute on this one. Do we have any comments? Okay, we can close it. All right. Jason, is this you presenting?
All right, so I'm gonna read the resolution. Whereas leadership matters for California's public education system and the more than 6 million students it serves. And whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. And whereas the title "school administrator" is a broad term used to define many educational leadership posts, superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, assistant principals, special education and adult education leaders, curriculum and instruction leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators. And whereas most school administrators begin their career as teachers, the average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial to their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas public schools operate with lean management systems, across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sector industries, including transportation, food service, manufacturing, utilities, construction, publishing, and public administration. And whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents. And whereas the state of California has designated the second full week in the month of October of each year as Week of the School Administrator in Education Code 44015.1. And whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary School District and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts hereby proclaims the week of October 10th through the 16th, 2021, as the Week of the School Administrator, commending all school leaders for the contributions they make to successful student achievement.
I move to approve Resolution 2122-06 of the Board of Education.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
I just want to thank you profoundly, all of you. And everybody, all the, all the administrators that we're honoring tonight. I can't imagine the past year and a half for all of you. I know everyone has been impacted in some way or another. I, this goes out to everybody, that the administrators were really the front line of this for a lot of last year and this year. They had to hold so many balls in the air while the ground was constantly shifting. And I just want to really, I really appreciate all the work that you guys and all of the administrators on all levels throughout our district. I think, I think all of you are doing work that I don't think I could do. So thank you.
And thank you for putting up my endless questions, emails. No, honestly, you guys are amazing. People are like, oh, the board did this. I'm like, no, we have an amazing district staff. So honestly, thank you guys all. Especially right now, Dave and Ashley. Like, thank, thank all of you guys, honestly.
Thank you.
Oh, oh my gosh. All right. Well, we're not ending yet, child. Future Business, SCL and Arts Presentation. Because you know you guys are gonna have some future business, okay? Because I know I do. SCL and Arts Presentation, next meeting that Ellen has been waiting, it feels like forever for. Anyone have anything else?
Yeah, if we could get the, I'll introduce the right people to the right people, but the Cool Block Challenge folks, the first meeting, I think November 9th would be awesome.
Which one? Say it again.
Cool Block Challenge, Cool City Challenge. Yeah. I keep forgetting what it's called. Yeah. It will be cool schools.
So, so you want to have them present at a future meeting? Okay. Oh, that sounds good. Also, I'm just wondering if we can have an update. I'm not sure what's going on with the diversify your narrative, diversifying the curriculum. If we could just hear about that.
We've, we've actually been meeting with the department chair, the department, English Department and History Department. And they've also met with Megan, the student who's been leading the diversify our narrative. There is another scheduled meeting, I think, this Friday. So I can send you an invitation to them. Yep.
So, so you're asking for an update? Just a, just an update?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Sheldon. I'm sorry. I keep forgetting your update.
That's all right. Could we put on a future agenda, a near-term future agenda, a board participation, community assignments for the board? Because the budget committee is starting up next week. And Lori already asked me, am I gonna continue? And my reply was, I think I am, but I think I better check with the board first. And so, you know, we may as well fill out, you know, articulate who's gonna be on LCAP budget and all the other committees.
Just, we usually end up serving on those, because you and I are both on the budget committee. We usually end up doing it for two years and then we move on to something else. I, I mean, that's the way it's been done in the past. I don't know if we want to continue it that way, but.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have three new board members come December too. So, you know, they'll, they might want to be on those committees as well.
Need students?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our students could be sitting on those committees as well. It would be great. We have some students on the budget committee, don't we?
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know about LCAP, but I know budget, we do.
Okay, we could probably start in the email, right? We could probably figure that out in the email.
Yeah.
Like, who's gonna sit on what?
I'm not sure. Can we? Because it's.
About like the committees?
Yeah, I don't know if that's, you know, if that's a, doing it by email, if that's a violation of Brown, I don't know.
Is that a Brown Act violation?
So we have LCAP and we have budget committee. And is there any other ones?
K-12 curriculum.
Oh, the K-12 Curriculum Committee. Which I would love to sit on.
Well, yeah, let's just add it as an agenda item in a future meeting, just to be safe and.
No, we can, we can add it for October 12.
Why don't we add it for next time though, since they're, everybody's starting up again?
Yeah.
I don't remember how we decided the first time. Maybe that's why. I don't think we did it.
I think we just showed up.
Oh, okay. Well, I can tag people. I can do that next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, when I, yeah, I mean, because I had done it for two years, LCAP. And so.
We'll add it for, for the next board meeting.
Okay.
Also, scheduling the office hours. Oh, that's right. Because we're already into October. And I would like to do that.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be on the agenda for October?
Yep. Sure.
We might need to work with Michelle on that, right? To get dates and stuff with the different school sites to visit. Yes. Like Caitlin called her the queen of logistics, Michelle.
She is. She's amazing.
Anything else? I did want to bring something up. I know like professional development is, I don't know. Like, I know that there's like set days and times for that. But if, and I know we're using Circle Up for the administrators right now. I don't know if there's anything further we should be doing, we could be doing. I don't know if we need to talk about professional development, like what's happened, what do we have planned coming up to talk about these school climate issues? Yeah, at some point.
Is professional development though, under the board auspices? Or is, I thought that was.
I can't really.
I'm sorry.
It's professionals, I don't know.
So wait, is the request, you were asking about professional development? What are you wanting?
Yeah, what's happened? What do we have coming up? Like, just what is the process for determining?
Just like an update about what's happening in professional development standpoint.
Because it's, it's not really a board.
Yeah, but we can give you an update.
But we did for.
I'm just asking. Is it, I mean.
We did request it for Title VI though, so I think we do have some.
No, and I understand that. I was just curious.
The board can request.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to hear what's happening. Anything else? Sheldon?
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, meeting adjourned.